Do I have to do anything special? Oh, thank you.
Can I briefly clip that on the screen? She already tested it to make sure.
Oh, sure. QR code?
My name is Chad Bishop. I live at 7405 South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. Let me begin by saying I reserve the right to be wrong in public because I often am. You have heard me advocate for the expansion of the district's support for first LEGO League robotics and the STEM-oriented programs that surround it. One lesson that we might take away from the experience of the pandemic is that improving the public's ability to think critically, use mathematics, and understand the scientific method should continue to be a principal focus for all educators. But today, I am here to advocate for a new kind of curriculum, a new kind of critical thinking, one centered around many of the ideas in this book first published in 1928 by a man named Edward Bernays. Its title is called Propaganda. It is time that we educate our children on the methods used to influence and manipulate them by public figures, nongovernmental organizations, and large corporations so that they might recognize propaganda and think deeply about the concepts. I can see this dovetail nicely into a curriculum on social media or electronic device self-management and addiction. In his book Propaganda, Mr. Bernays, talking about public policy, says, "To avoid such confusion, society consents to have its choices narrowed to ideas and objects brought to its attention through propaganda of all kinds. There is consequently a vast and continuous effort going on to capture our minds in the interest of some policy or commodity or idea." He is describing the propaganda technique of utilizing the false dilemma fallacy, also referred to as a false dichotomy, as an informal fallacy based on the premise that erroneously limits what options are available. He justifies it as necessary for the sake of political expediency. Conveying the broader concept, he says, "The conscious and intelligent manipulation of the organized habits and opinions of the masses is an important element in a democratic society. Those who manipulate the unseen mechanism of society constitute an invisible government, which is true ruling power of our country." Our friends on the left might recognize Noam Chomsky's take on the concept from the common good: "The smart way to keep people passive and obedient is strictly limit the spectrum of acceptable opinion, but allow very lively debate within that spectrum, even encourage the more critical and dissident views that give people a sense that there's free thinking going on while all the time the presuppositions of the system are being reinforced by the limits put on range of the debate." Those in my generation will remember the presentation of another false dilemma. You are either with us or against us. So would you believe I have a relevant example? Please note, this is not a complaint. I am not violating your policy. Last year, my daughter was read the book Anti-Racist Baby by Dr. Ibram X. Kendi in school. On this page, it says babies are taught to be racist or anti-racist. There is no neutrality. Now, how could anyone possibly argue against that statement? Being anti-racist sounds like an unassailable concept. Mr. Bernays made his fortune in advertising. He would likely say, "This is a brilliant branding effort." He would also probably acknowledge the skill that is used by folks in the media telling us Antifa means anti-fascist. You aren't fascist, are you? Why me? No. While we watch the ironically-named Antifa run around in black smashing Starbucks windows, harassing the elderly, and assaulting prayer groups in the fascist capitals of the USA, Seattle and Portland, returning to Kendi, "Babies are taught to be racist or anti-racist. There is no neutrality." Sounds like you are either with us or against us. Are we sure there are no other options? Is it possible for me to just not be racist without believing the rest of what Mr. Kendi says, writes, and believes? I think so. It is obvious to me. Is it possible for an elementary-age child who may or may not have the context -- it's in the curriculum, right -- to know if there are other options? Are they mature enough to understand? On the back cover of this book, it says, "To all the young people whose own imaginations are unbound by the imagination of state violence and white supremacy and who hold the power to build the world that is anti-racist, I believe in us." It's a compelling statement. The core sentiment, "I believe in." I think I agree strongly. However, I do have a question. What context was provided to my daughter as she, as they reviewed this book when it came to the discussion around state violence and white supremacy? How does your current curriculum handle this topic? Can you please follow up with me and provide this reference? So I would suggest that a second book, the second book, Anti-Racist Baby, is an example of the first book, Propaganda, and that it uses a technique of presenting a false dilemma, a logical fallacy, to my elementary-school-aged child in order to plant seeds and indoctrinate her in a fight against white supremacy. I'm not asking you to ban this book. I'm asking you to help teach our children to recognize this book for what it really is: propaganda. In the spirit of providing solutions, I again call for a curriculum to be created around the understanding of propaganda so that we can further enable our children to think critically and for themselves. Also, I'd like to donate two copies to each of the high schools in our district of Thomas Sowell's Discrimination and Disparities. Once again, I share your goal of making the Sioux Falls School District the best in the country. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chad. And I'm gonna have you either email or talk to Dr. Boyson. She oversees that department after --
Thank you.
-- to help --
Welcome to the opportunity.
-- get through that. Thank you. Okay, how many did we get it organized to? And then we'll figure out the time dispersion for the nine. Is there a spokesperson? Really short and just evenly equal it? Okay, so -- Yeah, so try to take it -- so if you equally get something, it'd be about a minute and three quarters. So just kind of keep it in there and maybe give a heads-up one. And then you had about a minute and a half to minute --
Well, they only get a minute and a half.
Yeah, yeah. A little bit more.
Okay.
Yeah, so about minute and a half, give them a heads-up. Does that sound good? Sounds great. Thank you. Eric Smith. Yes, just -- and it's not including your time. State your name and address, please, Eric.
Okay. Eric Smith, 300 North Lewis Avenue. Just wanted to say, I sent each of the board members a letter or an email. Dr. Staven and Dr. Mickelson both replied, so thank you very much for that. Basically, just wanted to talk about the masks, not to debate the merits of wearing a mask, even though I feel like there's plenty of physical and mental health data to stand on, which some of the other folks may speak to. Just wanting to make it kind of pulled up that where the previously agreed-upon direction of allowing parents to decide was medically acceptable for their child. We, as a society, have not agreed our choices regarding bodily autonomy should not be governed by the city, the county, the state, and certainly not the school board. So as elected official who helps direct policy based on the foundation of law currently set by the local and state levels of our government, as well as from input received by your constituents, I would strongly urge that we continue with the already agreed-upon measures laid out in the Continue to Learn Plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we will go to Nikki McCormick. Please state your name and address, too, please.
I'm Nikki McCormick, and my address is 5505 South Tierney Place. We are residents in Sioux Falls, and we also have two students in your schools. We have also been sending emails out each week. Dear Sioux Falls School Board, thank you for the opportunity to work together to make this a year of learning for our children. We are the parents of two students in your schools. We appreciate having the choice as parents on whether or not to wear the masks at school. During this school year, our children have noticed that they are able to understand other teachers and students and have better communication without the masks. In addition, they are encouraged to see more smiles and feel happier and have better moods at school. The tensions and divisions seem to be much less this year. Last year, our children and myself suffered from many headaches and lack of social interaction, and definitely I saw the effect of their mental health at home as a parent. This situation with teachers spending valuable instruction time enforcing masks went on all year last year. Two of our family members suffered from anxiety attacks, and as well, it made asthma worse. In addition, we witnessed children and adults without the masks in various buildings being bullied. Please continue with the Continue to Learn Plan, and thank you for allowing us to make choices that are best for our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Paulette Ludens. Please state your name and address, too.
My name's Paulette Ludens, 924 South Kiwanis Avenue in Sioux Falls. I just want to say, as a school bus driver here in Sioux Falls, I want to thank each and every one of you for lifting that mask mandate. Bus drivers, my glasses don't fog up. We're all -- I feel safer. Some still wear them, the ones that can, and some don't, and it's gone great. Children on the bus, the atmosphere's night and day from last year. The kids are happier. The parents, I have a lot of routes where none of them speak English, so with my facial things, I can see they trust me more. It seems like they're just -- we're just getting along great. So I wanted to thank you guys for that. I have four routes this year due to we don't have enough bus drivers, so if anyone wants a job, call me. So some still wear their masks, and that's great. And we get along, and some don't. And I want to say, I drove on Friday night the Lincoln High School Presidential Bowl. We had nine buses of wonderful screaming children and band members. So it was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Gary Schuster, please.
Hi, I'm Gary Schuster, 2812 Stratton Circle in Sioux Falls. Just want to say before I begin, I did send the outline for this presentation to the school board members, so please refer to that since there won't be much time to talk about it. I'm here to address the science of masking and realize that there's no masking mandate now, but if you decide to consider having one, you should feel very confident that it's actually going to reduce the transmission of COVID before you force people to wear masks, since they are, at the very least, a major annoyance and can actually lead to serious health problems in some cases. So the question is, how can you be confident? Well, typically, you look at science and you say, "What does the science say?" And science, it's pretty simple. It requires experiments, well-designed experiments, to show It requires experiments, well-designed experiments, to show evidence, statistically significant evidence, that something is going as predicted. So in this case, masking advocates would say the masks would cut the transmission rate in half or something to that effect. What does the science say? Well, the science says that there is-- There have been no experiments done to show the effect of masking in a classroom setting. So there is no science to really back up the claim that you'll reduce the transmission rate. There have been trials done in a community setting where groups of people have been given a mask or not, and the findings from that was no difference, no statistical difference. The people with the masks had the same transmission rates as the non-masked people.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Next is Teresa Pesci. Am I saying it correctly?
My name is Teresa Pesci. I reside at 709 South Waltz Avenue. So I'd like to just shortly discuss the possible causes of increase of mental health decline of children during the COVID pandemic. It has been an emotional roller coaster for everybody, especially children. This includes the fear, shame, and guilt emotions included. Though most likely intended adults who may imply or tell children to wear a face mask to prevent themselves, the child, or prevent someone else from becoming ill or possibly dying, it is unfair to burden the responsibility to that child. Telling a child to wear a mask that no matter how uncomfortable the mask may feel, how they can't easily breathe, and creates-- may create a skin rash or makes them tired, children are told to wear a mask to protect someone else. This thought process promotes a child's false sense of what they can control, what they can control, as well as may provoke fear, shame, and guilt. So then, when, if, and when grandma dies of a heart attack, then a child's perception may be caused-- may think they caused grandma's death, even though they may have or have not worn a mask. Children look to parents and teachers for clear and consistent guidance, rules, and to be acknowledged for their unique qualities. This helps develop self-esteem and self-efficacy. So their thought process and development towards self-responsibility lay the groundwork toward healthy adulthood.
Teresa.
Thank you. Thank you for keeping masks optional, and thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Erica Simonsen, and I'm at 3113 West Ralph Rogers Road. I just want to bring up something that I haven't seen the city of the school board or anyone do during the mask mandates. I have trained and been certified by the United States Military when I was in, in chemical and biological warfare, detection, protection, and cleanup. There have been no biohazard bins in place for proper waste of masks and used gloves, which will greatly increase the spread of contamination if that is, in fact, what we're trying to reduce. So they should be in place if we're gonna mask mandate. There should be teams that are known and are trained to properly dispose of those bins because they cannot go in regular trash. It's a biohazard. As well as not just having the bins, you should have properly trained-- and it wouldn't just be medical professionals on how to don and off masks. When kids are taking them off, when adults are taking them off, if they're not done properly, you can spread the virus, and then you're putting it back on again. So if you have virus on the inside of your mask, you are spreading it again. So we should take the time to have training, which will cost money and time if this isn't done properly. And I'm surprised that it hasn't been in place, that this is a concern of reducing transmission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Zoe Dahmer. I'm from 3420 South Golden Red Lane. First of all, I just want to say a huge thank you for a great start to this school year. It has been like so much fun. There's been so many good activities, so much more social interaction compared to last year, and football games are 100 times better. First of all, I just want to start off with, last year, I never wore a mask in school, as you may know. And last year, I felt just kind of, you know, in my own bubble, like kind of disrespected, and sometimes in class, I would get harassed. But this year has been nothing like it. I haven't experienced a thing like it, so I just want to say thank you for not enforcing any of that stuff. I felt so much comfortable and so respected. Another thing is that I can understand my teachers a lot more. Like, I can learn and comprehend things so much without masks. Like, I'm in Spanish, too, and Spanish, too, is a lot of grammar and a lot of sentence writing, and I actually can understand my Spanish teacher and what she is trying to say. And that goes along with just other classes, just typical things we do every day. And my last point is seeing people's faces, like their smiles, and knowing that the teachers care about me makes my day 100 times better because I want school to be fun and a safe environment for all of us, and I just thank you so much for that. And I'm asking and encouraging you to keep the guidelines as it is this year. And like I said, last year, I didn't wear a mask, and I got a perfect attendance, and we thought that, but thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Bruner, and I'm at 3420 South Alpine Avenue. I want to thank those of you who responded to my email that I sent recently that had a note attached from my little girl. She wanted you to know how much better school is this year because she can hear her teacher because the teacher's voice is not muffled by a mask, and quite simply, she's able to learn better. Our family supports you keeping mask-wearing a choice in the CTO plan. I'm also here because I spoke at the August 9 meeting. There, I questioned what the word encouragement in the CTO plan, and after observing how encouragement has been implemented across the district, I still have questions about how-- what the word encouragement means. I'm hearing from-- or different things from different families throughout the district. Some teachers I hear are encouraging students to follow the directions of their parents when it comes to wearing masks. Some schools have signs on the doors to encourage masks, and some don't. Some teachers are offering students masks when they walk into their classrooms and others don't. And I've even heard that some teachers are telling students that unless they're wearing masks, they need to stay six feet away from that teacher. So across the district, there should really be consistent application of policy as to how administrators, educators, and staff interact with students in encouraging masks. If the application is not consistent, students are not being treated equally. In conclusion, I would ask that you clarify for administrators, educators, and staff across the district that encouraging masks should be consistently applied as supporting choice of the family. And going forward, I urge you to keep masking a family choice in your school. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Gavin Wig. And I believe that's the last one. Did I get everybody else? Okay, I just want to make sure.
What's my time for this?
About just over a minute and a half, probably about minute forty, because some people went past their minute and a half time--
Okay.
--and kept talking, so yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm Gavin Wig, 1208 South Dundee here in Sioux Falls. I've got-- I work with the Roosevelt High School Trumpets, and I work with the Roosevelt Band. I also have three kids, two kids who are at McGovern in band and choir, and a child over at Roosevelt who is in band and choir. Wanted to talk about the effects of masking in fine arts. And first of all, thank you for keeping masks optional with the CTO plan. That's very important. In band, I saw how mandatory masking affected band kids through Allstate Band up in Mitchell. Along with distancing kids, they were told to wear masks or, quote, "they're out." They wore modified cloth and paper masks on their faces and on the horns. The entire performance, they were picking at, sweating through, readjusting masks. Basically, they were practicing very bad playing habits to accommodate playing through these masks. Jumping over to choir, my kids said that it was difficult to learn how to articulate and phoneticize through a mask, including tongue, jaw, lips, and mouth movements. Students can't see the teacher move, and the teacher can't correct and work with them to get better as a choir. At a choir concert this last year, the masks were worn, and as an audience member, the sopranos, altos, and basses' voices were all muffled. Visual cues of phonics and emotion were completely gone since we couldn't see their mouths. I believe I'm speaking for a very quiet majority when I thank you for keeping the CTO plan in place and keeping masking optional for students, staff, and volunteers. As I see in my own family, masking is bad for the fine arts education, performance, and is unnecessary as we're coming out of this pandemic with natural immunity and voluntary vaccinations on the rise. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for public input. Just want to-- I know we had-- we all received a lot of emails, thinking maybe there was a vote or an agenda item on this. And just for future reference, all of our agendas posted on our website, the school district website. There's a school board tab in that, and it has the agenda, and that's posted by Sunday. So we never would hide something and not, you know, just come today and have a vote and not the public know about it. So it will always be posted then, so you can go there and review it to see what's going to be on the agenda and so forth. So thank you very much for all being here. And I just want to explain, I have a commitment. I have a son up for homecoming at Lincoln, so I'm leaving now and handing the gavel to Vice President Parker. It has nothing to do with what's going on tonight, so thank you very much.
All right. We do not have any persons wishing to address the school board on agenda items, so we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion and a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion passes, and we are on to the good news report.
Time for a little history lesson. Tonight, we're focusing on Lowell Elementary. We had a great time about a month ago celebrating the launch of the district's 150th anniversary. Tonight, we celebrate a school that came in to be two decades into the start of our history. So Lowell Elementary was built in 1891, making this their 130th anniversary celebration of educating students in Sioux Falls. Lowell Elementary was the seventh building built by the Sioux Falls School District in the Summit Edition. The land was purchased for $1,000. It was situated at Prairie Avenue and also known as the street called Haslam Street, which was then renamed 18th Street. James Byrne was awarded the contract for the building, made of quartzite and slate shingles. The building was completed October 1, 1891, and many residents-- get this-- they couldn't understand why such a fine school would be built way out in the country. Remember, we're talking about Prairie Avenue and 18th Street. This is now the heart of Sioux Falls. We also heard, why on earth would you build Memorial Middle School way out in the country? 26 and Surtoma. And we recently heard that Jefferson, why on earth would you build a school way out in the country? So some things never change, right? This school was named after American author James Russell Lowell. He had recently passed when the construction of this school had finished. The building endured three fires in its 130 years. The first was on January 23, 1906, and that was the most significant fire. The inside of the building was destroyed. The story is that approximately at 11 o'clock that night, someone noticed a bright light in the location of the basement's coal bin, and shortly after that, there was a terrible explosion that took out the entire center of the school. Reports indicate that an unknown person had been seen running from that area with a lantern, but the cause of the fire was never actually determined, whether it was man-made or a combustible situation that caused that fire. Now, think back to the late 1890s, and Sioux Falls was bustling with lots of progress. Records indicate that there were some tumultuous times, though, for school leadership. Members of the board, who sat in the very seats that you are sitting this evening, were elected and then relieved of their duties. Others were elected and then relieved of their duties. A superintendent was named, and then that offer for a contract was rescinded, and another superintendent was named. So a lot of different things happening back then with the community and board leadership. Five years after opening, way out in the country, Lowell Elementary, the center picture there, had 206 students in 1896. You can see their record-keeping was quite primitive, but they did have enrollment numbers for the next 10 years on the sheet that is in the center there. On the left-hand side, you can see the attendance book. Carl Anthony, age 15, was the son of Edwin Anthony, who lived at 709 Waltz Avenue. Carl Anthony had the distinction of being listed first on the Lowell Roll Call list at the top of that book. At that time, there were three school divisions. There was the primary school division, the grammar school division, and the high school division. And each of those had A, B, C, and D. As you can see, grammar at the top, and then B division indicates that Carl would have been receiving sixth-grade instruction at Lowell in its first year. A record of teachers and salaries over on the right-hand side in 1900 indicates that Mrs. B.L. Saunders, who served as principal and eighth-grade teacher, made a whopping $65 that year. A large section was added to the original Lowell building in 1936, and then another again in 1967. The lower level of the building at that time housed the practical nursing program for what is now called Southeast Technical College. So our relationship back then, you know, included those adults who were learning nursing skills at that time as well. After the 1967 addition, the old Lowell was actually torn down. The bell, however, was saved, and that's the picture on the left, a bell tower. But not saved without controversy. Records indicate that four groups attempted to lay claim to that bell, the oldest bell, school bell in the city. The demolition company, the salvage crew, the school board, and the PTA. Everyone wanted that bell. The PTA was eventually victorious, and they opted to erect a freestanding bell tower on the southeast corner of the school. That bell tower still stands today, so has been preserved throughout history. Lowell Elementary has served central Sioux Falls families in many ways over the years and continues to be an integral part of the Pettigrew Heights neighborhood. Serves as a hub to bring families together, area churches, and groups like Promising Futures, and other parent volunteers have come alongside Lowell students and staff members as valued partners in education. And to celebrate the 130th anniversary, there is an event coming up. Lori Rolfe serves as the lead clerical at Lowell Elementary, but Lori is one of two committee members planning this 130th celebration. So I will let her come forward and tell you a little bit about that celebration and make the invitation to our community.
Thanks, Deanne. Thanks for sharing the good news about Lowell. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Lori. I have worked at Lowell for 17 years. I am proud to say I've had two children graduate from the Sioux Falls School District. My son graduated recently from Roosevelt. He open-enrolled and attended Lowell. My daughter graduated from Lincoln a few years back, and my granddaughter just started kindergarten at Lowell. I have only been at Lowell a few years, but I am proud to say that I've seen a lot of students, staff, parents, teachers, mentors, community members, neighbors, partners, guests pass through Lowell and go on to become and do great things with their lives, whether it's learn English, become a police chief, graduate, have babies. So we just want to invite all community members who may have had Lowell as a part of their life for a minute or for eight years, or for 17 years or 30 years, depending on who you are and what you did, to come back and just share your experience with us so we can share it with our students and let them know that Lowell builds leaders. So please join us on Friday, October 1, from 5 to 7, and share your story. And if that doesn't work for you, you're welcome to come to our tree planting or share your story on our Facebook page, but we welcome you. We honestly welcome you anytime. So we're happy to give a tour to you guys especially. So we're happy to give a tour to you guys especially. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to conflicts of interest. We didn't have any new conflicts of interest this week. And so we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. And moving on to the supplemental consent agenda items, A, Claims to Sanford. Can I get a motion and a second, please?
10A.
So 10A, B, and C. Yep. Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion passes with one abstention from Board Member Ryder. And on to the reports of the superintendent. First one is the initial enrollment report.
Good evening. My pleasure to be here tonight to present the initial enrollment numbers, and those are taken... Let's see here. The initial enrollments that we take and have traditionally presented to the school board have been as of the fourth day of school. So that's what I'm presenting here tonight. The final count will be done as of the last Friday of September, which will be September 24th this year. So we'll be back again in October to present our final numbers. So what we're seeing, you can see, in this case, we're presenting to the same time period as last year. So this is preliminary to preliminary. And there's a little bit of a nuance here based on what was happening last year, and I'll get into that in a little bit. But right now, our preliminary enrollment K through 12 is 24,122. And at the time we took this, we had about 1,000 kids in pre-K, 69 kids in junior kindergarten, so total enrollment of just shy of 25,200. And if we compared it to the same time that we took the count last year, it would tell you that we were about 29 students higher from a K through 12 basis. So, and I'll explain a little bit more on that. Now traditionally, when we looked at our preliminary numbers compared to our final enrollments, we've been pretty close. And so if you look at the actual fall enrollment count, going back to 2014, 15 school year, you can see we were at 23,031. And when we did the preliminary count, we were at 23,096. So that's what those two columns are comparing. And until last year, we were, you get pretty close to, from prelim to final. And then that middle column is the actual increase if you increase, if you look at actual over actual. So for instance, from 2015 to 16, we increased 243 students and so on. Last year, if you look at the 2021 year, we had a preliminary fall enrollment of 24,093, and we actually came in at 23,912. So we have a significant churn in the, between the preliminary and the final numbers last year, which is no surprise. We just had a lot of movement, parents trying to figure out what they were going to do with their kids. And so that was the first year that we saw significant change. And so this year, seeing more stability, so looking at that 24,122 number, when I looked at the enrollments this morning, pretty much right on that number. So I expect a return to more of a traditional change between where we're at now and the final number. So if we ended up at around that 24,122 number, we would actually be up 210 students this year versus last year. This next chart is just comparing preliminary counts to preliminary counts last year. And I wouldn't spend, since I, since I can reasonably say that we're going to see a much, we won't see as much change as last year. I think the right way to look at it is comparing preliminary to where we were at on the final count last year, and that's what this, this chart here. And so it would say that we're going to be within seven students of where we were last year from an elementary school basis. We'll be within eight students on a middle school basis of where we were at actual, our final count last fall, and we'll be up about 215 high school students. So that comes back to that total increase of the 214 students that we should see if everything holds the next couple of weeks here, which, again, haven't seen as much movement this year. One thing that, there's a lot of curiosity of what the makeup is of our kindergarten class, and since we had, you know, last year, thinking that parents might be holding their kindergarteners back a year. So we went back five years, and you can see from this chart, you can see if they were age five, that means they were sort of starting kindergarten on schedule or when they could. And if, and if they were six on here, they were essentially starting a year later when they, when they could have. So it's interesting, actually, from over the course of the last five years, it's really an 80/20 scenario. So, and it's been relatively constant. The constant numbers may change a little bit in that, you know, this, this, this school year right now, we see about 420 students that were, actually could have started last school year. But it's been relatively constant, so something we'll continue to watch. But it would also tell you the number of kids that possibly could be in our junior kindergarten program if we, if we could reach all those, all those parents. So with that, again, kind of in summary, I think we should see a growth of a couple hundred students over where we were actually at last fall. And we will report back to you in early October. Again, the final count will be on September 24th, the last Friday, which is really a week from this Friday. So I would ask you to acknowledge the Fall 2021 Initial Enrollment Report and stand by for any questions.
I think one thing I'd be curious about, and I don't expect you to have the answer off the top of your head, but when we went out and did a tour at Jefferson, we had met several students who had been at Tri Valley or other high schools kind of in that northwest area that had open enrolled to Jefferson. So of those 215 additional high school students, I'm curious how many of those maybe were drawn to Jefferson from other locations that were closer, and if that had an impact on that positive number that we're seeing this year in the high schools.
I can bring that with the next report, the final. The other thing we can get going both ways, we know, so in, once everything's finalized at the state level, we'll also be able to tell what our kids were there, if they're open enrolling out. And so it's kind of a net thing. Traditionally, we've always had many more students that opt into the Sioux Falls School District, but we lose some as well. So, and, but the state will give us that information once all the enrollments are final from their level. So hopefully in the next report, we can at least know the kids that are coming into the district. So I'll bring that to the next report.
I, I do think that this slide that you're showing right now is very interesting with the ages, because we were probably thinking it was going to be different. And, and it's encouraging to see that it's been consistent that whole time. Maybe a handful more seven-year-olds, but really that's about, and that's, you know, really an insignificant number in the grand scheme as far as the numbers. But very interesting to see the consistency throughout the last five years.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. On to the Advanced Placement Program Report.
Good evening. The Advanced Placement Program is available to high school students who are interested in college preparatory classes that are academically rigorous and rich in content. At the conclusion of those courses, students take an AP exam, and those exams are scored by College Board on a scale from 1 to 5. Students who score a 3 or higher may be eligible for college credit. During the 2020-21 school year, we had 32 course offering options in AP in a wide variety of, of courses, and 2,417 exams were taken. Yep. Sorry. There we go. 2,417 AP exams were taken by 1,310 students. Chart A here shows you the number of students who take an exam by grade. So our ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, all students are encouraged to take at least one exam during their high school career. And you can see that we've stayed fairly consistent in those numbers, except we've seen a little bit of decline among our seniors. One thought is that our dual-credit courses have increased. In the 2019-20 school year, we had 98 students take a dual-credit course, and last year, we had 201 students take a dual-credit course. So that may be one of the reasons. Those students that take an AP course often take more than one exam during their four years. And you can see from Chart B that we continue to have over 600 students take at least two or more exams during their high school career. We do have a district AP committee that's made up of teachers, parents, and community members. And one of the goals of that committee continues to be not only to promote AP course offerings and success on the AP exams, but also to increase the number of exams taken by minority students. And Chart C shows the number of exams desegregated by race. We did see success in, in a couple of areas, maintained in some others. There was a slight decrease among our Black and Hispanic students. Again, one thought might be that we continue to have more students not check any box and have students who checked two or more races. But this is an area we continue to strive to improve. Table 1 here shows all of the exams that students took in this past year and how many students scored 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5. And as you glance through the chart, you can see that the majority of our students did score 3, 4, or 5, which we're excited to see. And if you look a little more closely, you'll even see some courses where all of the students who took the exam scored a 3, 4, or 5. Sioux Falls continues to be very successful when it comes to AP exams. Chart E compares AP exam scores between the Sioux Falls School District, the state, and global scores. This past year, we had 1,752 of the exams, of the 2,470 exams, score a 3 or higher. And so that put our pass rate in the district at 73.4 compared to the state, which is at 67.6, and the global pass rate at 56.4. So we continue to shine brightly in the state. College Board offers a number of scholar awards. This year, the College Board recognized 433 AP Scholar Award winners in our district. That's up from 418 last year. This table 2 explains those different awards. So we had 188 students who received a score of 3 or higher on three or more AP exams. The AP Scholar with Honors, there were 85 students who received this honor. Those students received an average score of 3.25 or higher on all AP exams, and a score of 3 on four or more of these exams. We also had 160 students receive the AP Scholar with Distinction. These students received an average score of 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and scores of 3 or higher on five or more exams. We also had a student receive the AP Capstone Diploma. And this is a result of a class, you may remember, for the last couple of years, we've added the AP Research and the AP Seminar courses. And so a student scored 3 or higher in both of those courses and on four additional exams. We also had a student score an AP International Diploma, and that student scored 3 or higher on five or more AP exams. And two students received the AP Seminar and Research Certificate, and those students scored 3 or higher in the AP Seminar and Research Course. The budget for the fiscal year of 2022 was $122,330. And with Jefferson opening this year and not having any AP history, that money was allocated evenly between all four buildings and is used for teachers to attend AP conferences, purchase materials, and then also with costs associated with the exam. Last year, tests ranged, were $95 per test. Students with a financial need, based on College Board, received financial aid, and then the district also supported students who had a need basis but did not qualify according to College Board requirements. So as you can see, our AP program continues to be a shining beacon, I believe, in the Sioux Falls School District. I stand by for questions and ask the board to approve the AP report.
I just want confirmation that the dual enrollment, or dual-credit grew from 98 to 201 students.
That's correct.
And the 98 was from the 1920 academic calendar.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think when you combine AP and dual-credit, they're both great options. And for some students, one might make more sense than the other. But I think for a lot of students, any sort of a combination of the two is really an amazing opportunity for them to get that head start when it comes to going to whatever their post-secondary education is. And so it helps them with that rigor of the class and getting them used to taking those bigger tests to prove their, their knowledge and the content expertise that they have. And it's great to see so many people being successful in just a wide variety of classes. It doesn't just have to be math classes or just science classes. I love that there's art and other activities that really have a wide range of interests for our students. So it doesn't have to be what you just think about as academic with, you know, reading and writing and math. It's, it's a lot of other options, too. So exciting to see that we continue to have success and that our students are finding kind of their own way, whether it's dual-credit or AP and a combination of both. So thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I will just say, this is a good opportunity to recognize our teachers who teach AP and dual-credit. They are required to do some additional kinds of things to be eligible to teach those courses. And I think it's also a good reflection on a district to see that the level of rigor exists, and students who pursue the, the choices of courses and the commitment to academic excellence is alive and well, and we want to continue to promote that. But it's always good to make sure that we see that that bar is available and is set very highly.
Thank you. Right. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the Advanced Placement Program Report?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. And on to the 2023 graduation date change. Dr. Noel. Dr. Knoll.
Good evening, and this evening I bring forward to you a proposal for a date change of the graduation date for the 22-23 school year calendar. And I bring that forward for your approval. The explanation of this is very simple. The district calendar committee did meet, and we proposed that the school board adopt the recommended 22-23 calendar date change for graduation. This would move graduation one week earlier. The current date for graduation in that school year is May 28th of 2023. The new date would be May 21st of 2023. The final day of classes would still remain the same. It would just move the graduation date earlier. The committee that went through and reviewed this is the calendar committee that is comprised of 29 individual members representing a variety of groups within our district, including our parent contributors that have six parents serving on this committee. Their overall recommendation for this is really to review the requests that have come in over the years to move the date of graduation away from the Memorial Day weekend. And so we did look at that. At first, the committee did review that for the 21-22 school year, but out of any concerns that people may have had previous plans for that school year, the 2022 graduation date, it was not unanimous that we approve it for that year. It was 18 to 4. But it was unanimous with those that submitted their vote to change it for the 22-23 school year. So again, the administrative recommendation for that is to approve the 22-23 school year calendar graduation date change from May 28th of 2023 to May 21st of 2023, based on the calendar committee's work and recommendation. And I'd stand by for any questions.
I've got a question, Jamie.
Yep.
So, will seniors leave school?
That part is still being worked on by the building principals. So the question was, will seniors leave a week early? That part is still being worked on by the building principals. So it moved the graduation earlier. And as you know, on the day of graduation, they do not receive a diploma in that booklet anyway. So whether that was a week earlier or not, it's still to have that same opportunity to go through graduation. But that part, we do have a, a group working together to determine what would be the criteria, depending on the impact of the semester tests. There's multiple districts around us that do have seniors get out earlier, so that could be part of that final proposal that comes forward. The first step in the process would be to have that graduation date changed, then they would go through to start to work on the recommendations for what we would do on that change.
Then they won't be in trouble if they are out of equal standards?
Absolutely. It would not be any issue as far as the qualifications for graduation, and we would still give, even if it was that they were out earlier with the semester test, they'd have every opportunity to take that if it impacted the grade. But they're still working through those details.
Jamie, when is the state tennis and track meets?
It would vary, depending on the time of that. That is one that usually hits on that. But since graduation is on the Sunday because that date changes, so some years it does impact with golf, or it would impact with the track meet. So on that 2022, or 22-23 school year, I'd have to go look at that again. But the calendar committee does have that information from the spring when we look at the graduation dates each year. So it does change in there, but with the graduation on a Sunday, that would still not impact them. That would allow them to still participate in the graduation.
Perfect. I looked up next year, and then it fall on a Saturday, but I, up my calendar, so it does fall on a Sunday still.
Yeah. So we do always have the graduation on the Sunday because it will impact, in some of the years, it impacted golf, and some of the years it impacted the state track meet. And so we, we have always maintained ours on a Sunday.
So then, yeah, students, if they're, if they're in school that last week, they still will be able to participate in state tennis?
Absolutely. So any of the seniors that would qualify traditionally for graduation would still be up to, because we have that determined by the start of the second semester of their senior year.
Thank you.
So looking at the calendar for that year that we posted online, it would, assuming no snow days or weather days, it would really be three days less of actual school day if they, if we said they were done and didn't have to return after that date.
You're correct.
Because we just Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
The number of school days, if it was determined that the seniors would not come back into that final week, the number of school days that would be missed pending
Yeah.
snow days would be three. There's still also, as part of that, that it could be that they still come back in and take the semester test. They're working on a few different portions of that, and majority of our, our seniors do not take the district semester test, so we still could have that. And, and other districts around us have the same thing, where semester tests for seniors are taken that week early.
Sure. And for some of them even, I mean, going back to the report we just had for AP, many of them are taking AP tests, so they may have already taken that exam mid-May or early May, and so they wouldn't have another final, per se, for that class anyways, so.
If not, a majority, a significant number of the AP tests taken
Yeah.
are taken by seniors.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, I know I have gotten feedback as well about the holiday, and I think, you know, some people think, well, gosh, you already have it off, and so it's easy to travel. But then other people, you know, are that, well, it's already a long weekend, and then you have to spend it at graduation. Or when do you have your parties or your open houses, or things like that? So I think it is nice to, to think about moving that forward and, and giving families other options as well. So you could still have your open house on that date if you wanted to, and it'll give you other options for that, so. Very nice.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the 2023 graduation date change?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That motion passes. And on to the second reading of Sioux Falls School District Policies and Regulations. Brett, are you taking this? Okay. Thanks.
Two policies are up for a second and final reading. JH and its accompanying regulation relating to student attendance, and JHCDE related to medical cannabis. Since the August 9th first reading, no public comments were received. I just ask that you approve the second reading and adoption of these policies.
Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, that passes. All right, anything else for the good of the order? All right, can I get a motion, a second to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.